Before we start every meeting, we make it a purpose for the board to come together for prayer before we begin the meeting. So those who would like to join us, please stand and do so. Ms. Knight's gonna lead us.
Dear gracious and heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you to thank you for allowing us to gather here, for the opportunity to recognize and honor these students and staff. Lord, we ask that you be with them as they start this new school year. Be with them every day, keep them safe, help them to learn and make good steps in their life. Again, we thank you for giving us the chance to make decisions and policies and things that we can all work together to help Stokes County schools. We also ask that you be with those that are going through sad or difficult times or suffering loss within their family. Lord, give them strength, comfort them, and just be with them. And we ask this all in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Please stand up and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be, please be seated. Okay, with that being done, I'll go ahead and officially call it to order. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Knight, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? And for those looking at home in YouTube land and in person, Ms. Bennett had a family emergency, so she has joined us remotely, so if you hear a voice from above, it's Ms. Bennett, we hope. All right? We'll move on to good news.
And I had a moment of panic there for a second. I was looking for Ms. Langford to come introduce our good news portion, and I didn't see her, but I guess she blended in with the students there. But Ms. Langford, if you could come forward and start the presentation for the good news portion.
Thank you, wonderful, loud and successful.
Ms. Langford, excuse, is the green light on? Does that will work?
It is now, thank you. I've never had that problem not being loud enough. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and have these students recognized. They did some really great things this summer, and I'm just grateful to all of you for taking time out tonight to come and be recognized and for taking part of your summer to do what you have future plans toward doing, so thank you. Camp Med is sponsored by Northwest AHEC, that's the Area Health Education Center from Wake Forest. Don't know why I didn't write that down, so I could say it right. They sponsor that every year through grant funding, and they give us, they give us a good amount of money so that we're able to purchase things for them to get some hands-on experiences. And this year, if you'll notice in the slideshow, they got a lot of hands-on experience, and they did a lot of things. We had 27 students who attended, all are a part of this program, over two three-day camps in June. Students explored the anatomage table, a virtual dissection visualization tool at Northern Regional Hospital. The anatomage table is the only all-in-one device in the world to be able to show real segmented human anatomy and physiology in one-to-one life size. They visited several departments throughout the hospital, gaining a variety of experiences. Students participated in programs with the Stokes County Health Department and Life Bright Community Hospital in Danbury, again, visiting departments and doing hands-on activities. Each student participated in heart saver training and became certified during this camp. They were able to experience Stop the Bleed, they received hands-on training doing TB tests and phlebotomy on venipuncture arms, not real people. That's part of what we were able to purchase with the grant funding. They were trained in suturing, taking vitals, and they participated in Narcan training and education. They toured the emergency department and were shown how to use cardiac monitoring. They toured the lab, conducted intubation in respiratory, counted fake pills in the pharmacy, and watched IV preparation. They were able to view x-rays and discuss what they were seeing. They used the Hoyer Lift in physical therapy. They also visit our E-911 Communications Department to learn more about that department and what they do here in Stokes County. Our students spent a day at Wake Forest facilities where they delivered babies. They used ultrasound equipment, they practiced CPR on mannequins that were put through a variety of stressors and responses at Innovation Quarter in Winston-Salem. After that experience, we traveled to the primate center and toured the facility and learned more about the research they do and how it's beneficial to humans. We also did a DNA lab simulation while we were at the primate center. Didn't even know we had a primate center in Winston-Salem, so that was very, very interesting, lots of monkeys. During the final part of the visit to Life Bright, students visited with residents at the skilled nursing facility. They played games, painted nails, and even got to serve residents during a birthday party. This part of the Camp Med experience allowed students to give back while fulfilling the program's grant requirements of a community service project. So they did a lot, as you can see from the pictures, they did a lot, they saw a lot. And I am going to ask now, if I could, if you are here as a parent or a teacher of any of these students that attended, if you please stand up that you're here to support them tonight. Thank you so much for coming here. If you are part of the community members who, I don't know if we have anybody here, but we may, who worked at one of the facilities that, and helped us tour and helped us in that, if you could stand. Ms. Taylor Bohannon back there kind of orchestrated the whole E-911, Life Bright, Health Department thing, and it was great, they learned a lot. We're gonna call these folks up for certificates, but first I would like to ask Nefertari Avalas to come up. She's from Stokes, Stokes Early College, okay, I was making sure I had it right. And these students were from all three traditional high schools as well as the early college. So she'd like to say a word about her experience, and then I have one other student who'd like to speak to you.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to talk about how Camp Med has helped me shape on what I wanted to do with my career. Hearing about this program, I was excited because it had multiple examples of hands-on experience and multiple opportunities that would help me find something that I'd be passionate about. During this program, we viewed ultrasound, radiology, cardiology, respiratory, CPR, and even monkeys. But the one thing that piqued my interest the most was labor and delivery. It made me feel that I was, it was what I was meant to do. I had a whole point, whole different point of view of when I would deliver the baby. Even though it was a mannequin, it still felt real. I was helping a mother become a mom, and I was also bringing a soul into this world. And speaking of mothers, I wanted to recognize my mom. She's the main woman that helps me push to become the best version of myself. I wouldn't be here without her, honestly. Camp Med was a fantastic opportunity that I'm grateful to be a part of, and I hope others who do this program have the same experience as I did. Thank you.
And next, from West Stokes High School, we have Kelton Bell. Kelton is our one and only male who attended, so thank you for speaking.
Good afternoon. I hope you have had a good day. This summer, I had the privilege of attending Camp Med. An experience that I can honestly say it was life-altering. Out of roughly a dozen students in my group, I was the only male. It was very intimidating, but I got used to it. At the end, I felt like I had a dozen sisters just cheering me on. The camp was packed with experiences I never forget. I learned CPR, practiced drawing blood, volunteering with the in-house nursing facility, and even explored the human body on the amazing anatomage table. It's like a little anatomy GPS system. But the most impactful part was meeting real professionals from so many fields of medicine. Hearing their stories, their advice, and their passion for helping people not only inspired me, but also sparked a deeper interest in my medical field, in the, excuse me, my deeper interest in the medical field. I made new friends, sharpened my communication skills, learned to collaborate, and gained confidence about the future. I want to thank you for giving me the experience to attend Camp Med. I want to especially thank Ms. Langford for taking the time to be with us on such an amazing journey. Camp Med didn't just give me skills, it gave me inspiration, direction, and a clear vision of what's possible. And for that, I'm truly thankful. Thank you.
You guys are excellent speakers, I'm impressed, nicely done. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Neil Atkins to come up and hand out your certificates. And if you would, guys, you can just head up to the stage there after, after he gives, I think.
And Ms. Kane will be up here to kind of direct you where to get for the picture.
Thank you. Oh, that's different. Okay, we can't do it like this. Logistics is not my strong suit, apparently. I need the list. Stay with me, how about that? Okay, Kelton Bell. Sasha Borgan. Riley Clinton. Samantha Henness. Aubrey Lovings. Alexa Schaus. Raven Simmons. Nefertari Avalas. Savannah McBride. Madison Moser. Camden Moser. Samantha Rule. Did I leave anybody off that is actually here? Any bodies? Okay, perfect. We can just give these out, I'll go out in the hall. Thank you for that.
That conclude good news?
And that concludes the good news portion.
Okay, moving on to public comments. We have no public comments, so we will skip on to the consent agenda. Now, all of you that did Camp Med, this is typically where you run for the exit because it gets a little boring after this, but thank you for what you're doing. Okay, as they're filing out, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, we're approving the work session minutes of August 4th, 2025 SRO memorandum of understanding and approval of capital outlay budget. Deaf, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Bennett? All right, so moved. Okay, superintendent's report, Dr. Rice, tell us all the good things happening.
Board, as you know, we are, today we finished our fourth day of school this year. This report has to do with the first three days of school. Wanted to let Friday happen so we'd have a little data, but to try to make sure I had time to get it accurate, I did not include today's information. We'd like to start with an enrollment update. You'll see on the screen and at your place tonight that we are down some students, but this is how much it is at each place. This is comparing apples to apples, day three of this year, Friday's enrollment versus day three of last year. And so Germanton is down four, King Elementary is down one, London is down five, Mount Olive is up 11, Nancy Reynolds was even, Pinnacle was down 21, Poplar Springs was up 11, Sandy Ridge was down 18, Walnut Cove was down five for a reduction, and 32 at the elementary level. At the middle school level, Chestnut Grove was down 26, Piney Grove was up 13, and Southeastern was down 23 for, again, a net of negative 36. For high school, North Stokes was down 15, South Stokes is down four, West Stokes was up 12 for a net of negative seven. Stokes County Academy, which you know is a fluid number anyway, was down nine, and the early college is up three for a net of negative six. And then the next page has all of those on one side for each level, and we were down 81 students as of the first three days. We will continue to send out PMR reports for that daily. I believe Ms. Hudson is sending that out with updates for you to see that as well, where we have five-day, I don't believe, a 10-day comparison, but this is a three-day to three-day comparison. As far as to give an idea of class size, the next part that you will see is the enrollment, again, at each school based on that three-day enrollment. And then for elementary schools, the ones that we concentrate the most on are class sizes of core teachers. But this does include pre-K. And so you can see our average class size for core instruction across the bottom for a district, we are sitting at 18.2, and you can see that most of those schools are around that 18.2 number. I believe it's as low as 15.7 and as high as 20, so they're all relatively close to that. In the middle school level, again, it's, the average for our district is 16.4. This does include elective teachers, it does not include EC classes. But this does include the elective teachers in that, and you can see for a district average where it's 16.4, and it goes, again, with three schools, the variance is small, from 15 up to 17.7. For the high schools, the average is 16.6, again, it's non-EC classrooms, but it is at 16.6, and we range from 14.1 to 17.7. And the early college is 20 to 1 student teacher ratio, and Stokes County Academy is at 5.5. But again, throughout the year, their enrollment usually goes up throughout the year. As far as combo classes, I know when we did our long-range planning, the goal was to reduce combo classes in our district. And you can see from the next page that for the second straight year, we are starting the year with four combo classes, which if you look back over the historical data is a reduction from the 10 to 15, 11 to 16 that we had had in previous years. So the long-range planning does greatly reduce the number of combo classes in our district. The next slide goes by that with by district, where we have two in the north, one in the south, and one in the west for our total of four, and you can see how that compares by district in the past. The last thing I'd like to just highlight real quick is staff vacancies. For anybody that's listening online or our deputy in the crowd, if you're looking for a position in Stokes County schools, we do have a few vacancies. We are very, while we want to get these filled as soon as possible, we're very pleased at this time of the year that several of these positions were just due to late resignations for different reasons. But we have a total of 15 vacant positions after the board approves the personnel report here in a few minutes, hopefully. But this is what we would be left with, and if you notice, the majority of those are bus drivers. And so if anyone would like to drive a bus for Stokes County schools and would be interested in getting a CDL, we would love to put you to work. And again, six of our 15 vacancies are bus drivers. But that is our first three-day report. I will say that overall, things have been going very well. I try not to say that too loud in front of Mr. Roberts because Mr. Roberts has not had a full night's sleep yet between a couple of panic alarm short circuits that went off that he got a very early wake-up call for, and we had a water tower issue and a HVAC issue that we have not had to miss a day of school due to their quick reactions. Him and his team have taken care of issues as they've occurred and kept us going. But overall, we're very happy with the start that we've had, and we look forward to great things in the coming days.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rice. And Mr. Roberts, we just want y'all to feel needed. That's our goal, to make sure maintenance in your department feel needed. Okay. All right, moving on to discussion, discussion of maintenance capital project update.
If he nods off during this, we'll poke him, but.
Good evening, board members. I've included a copy of the capital budget projects update in your packet. I had asked Ms. Moore to help me with, to get some of these numbers together to help all of you see more of the detail of what we have in the projects we have in the carryover list. The list represents how much of the budgeted amount is left to be paid to close out the respective project. On the right column, if you see complete, it means that the project is complete from a physical standpoint, but not complete from invoicing standpoint. The word match in the right column shows how much we still had to pay out to meet our share of the needs-based capital fund projects, which are the North Stokes and Walnut Cove roof replacements. I'll go through each item and give you some additional details, and please feel free to stop and ask questions as we go along.
What page is he on?
I think we have the wrong document in the folder, I'm just now noticing that. This is this year's capital request, not last year's project updates. I think we have the wrong document, we will send you that document.
Discussions. Okay. So.
We have it in our book.
Yes, the discussion agenda is that where we're at.
Yes, but ours is the 25, 26 capital projects with the budgeted amount and the superintendent's request is what's in the packet and what's showing on the screen.
All right.
So.
Disregard.
So we've got it swapped with consent and discussion, okay. All right, consent C, if you'll go to the consent agenda, you'll see, I believe, what he's looking for.
The last page in consent?
Yes, sir.
Consent C.
All right, I think you can read the same now. You have it right.
Oh, okay, I had it right, okay. Sorry for the confusion there, so, anyway, I go through this list of the capital project update. So number one, we have central office generator. That one list has been on hold, but that's just for our electrician group to get done at South Stokes, putting in bank heating in the gym, and then we'll move on to this project. I have talked to the county about that as well. Number two is Chestnut Grove Patch and Paint Tennis Courts, that is on schedule. They're a little bit behind where I'd asked them to make some repairs at West Stokes before this. They have taken care of that at West Stokes, and we'll be moving on to this soon. Number three, child nutrition dishwasher, that is in place, and Mr. Brown and I are working with the installer there over some logistical issues with some electrical appliances, but it is in process. As you can see, King, number four, drainage and pothole repairs, that is in process. We started that a couple of weeks ago, but we had some equipment tear down. We've got our equipment back. We've got our equipment back now, so that will proceed. Restroom addition, needs-based public school capital fund grant match, fencing remote access gates, as you can see there, are on hold. Mount Olive replacement of outdated air volume boxes, I'm working with Stanley Heat in there right now to try to come up with a remedy still on that one. Have some outdated equipment there, but we'll get that taken care of. Number nine, North Stokes replaced roof on band building field house. The engineer still has those drawings. I know I told you all before that he went and ran into some serious health issues, put him behind on that, but he's back at work and working again, so hopefully soon on that. Pine Hall consolidation, pretty much complete. We're done out there with everything. Replaced tiles and pot at Pinnacle, that one is complete, that's been done. We just haven't received final invoicing for that yet. Replaced main building and gym roof at Pinnacle, that is complete, but we have not received the last invoice. Sandy Ridge removed trailers, installed metal storage building. The trailers are, have been removed. We've got to do some grading and put the footings and the pad down in there yet. New greenhouse at South Stokes, the concrete contractor's got a notice to proceed right now, so he says September 1st for the pad. I've already scheduled the building itself, the structure itself, to be lined up there, so as soon as he gets the pad down, we'll put the structure up. Track replacement at South Stokes, they have completed putting the topping for the second time on the track, and the striping is starting this week. We assume that will be done this week if the weather holds up. Stokes County Academy replaced windows in boys restroom, that is complete, hasn't been invoiced yet, but that project is done. You can see system-wide HVAC upgrades, we're using that as we need to replace equipment, and we're getting ready to replace some at West Stokes High School right now in Ag Building. Lead paint asbestos assessment, that is complete. We have not get the final invoice for that, but it is complete. Activity bus conversions, three complete on that one. Walnut Cove roof replacement, that shows the match, the amount we still have to pay to the needs-based grant, but Walnut Cove roof in itself is 95% done. They got some metal trim work to do, they're working on it right now. Expect them to be done any time. West Stokes rebuilding tennis courts, and we're awaiting that bid approval, which I'll talk to you about a little later. Down at the bottom, you see the two grant-funded projects. We kind of covered those already, but I listed those down there so that you can see the amount left to be paid. Any questions, anybody have anything?
Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
Have the bids officially went out on the project at West Stokes or...
The tennis courts?
Yes, when will that happen?
Yes, ma'am, we've already bid it, we've already opened bids, and I'm going to ask for your approval tonight on that, on that bid.
Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Robertson?
I guess my question is, and it may be more for the board than this for Mr. Roberts, but about King Elementary, I know we've got projects there on hold. What is going to be the pleasure of the board for this? Are we going to proceed on with the restroom addition and doing some needed repairs at the King Elementary School? Are we going to commit to, to really, I mean, we all, I think we all understand that that school needs a lot of work, and are we going to commit to go ahead and proceed fixing the school, trying to update it? Are we going to commit to trying to build a new school for King Elementary? We've been talking about this for a couple of years, it seems like now, two or three years, and we're not making any progress with it. And I was there the first day of school, helping, just, Dr. Throer asked me to come over and help get kids out of the car that day, and we have heard some pushback from the parents, some complaints from the parents about certain conditions of the school. And I think as a board, we have a responsibility, you know, we're doing a lot of work to all the other schools. We, you know, we've done some of our older schools, we've been fixing them up. Mr. Roberts can probably contest to that, and I just want to know, I'm going to ask, you know, our board, what's our plans for King Elementary? Are we going to get into, are we going to fix it? Are we going to commit to building a new school or pushing for new financing to build a new school? I think the students and the parents and the people at King Elementary deserve an answer from us as a board.
Well, I'm sitting here looking at $75,000 that's been spent there right now, right, Ms. Roberts?
That's what we had budgeted, yes, sir.
Drainage and pothole repairs, but that doesn't take care of, you know, we've visited the school, we have done a facility tour, we've visited the school, we all walked into the restrooms, we know what kind of conditioner in. Are we going to commit to fixing those drainage and pothole repairs? Really doesn't begin to touch what needs to be done at the school. I think we all know that.
I think this board has agreed that we need to, we need a new school, period. We're just spending money on non-recoverable assets.
Yeah, I mean, in the capital request, I mean, there's over a million dollars just for King Elementary. I know it was, I think part of that was on hold, if my memory serves me right, was because was waiting to see about the grant. Of course, that didn't go through, not no fault of this board's, but I agree that there's work that needs to be done, absolutely. I don't think nobody on this board would disagree with that. It's just, what's the point? Where is the point to where, you know, we're spending $400,000 on additions versus a new Unless we have funding, unless we have finance, and then I don't know how we go about that.
Well, okay, so the question is, then how long are we willing to wait? If we don't know for sure when we're going to get finance and if we're going to get finance, then how long are we willing to wait for that to happen? And are we committed to building, if financing became available tomorrow, is everybody on the board committed to building a new King Elementary?
The majority of the board has voted and said yes, multiple times.
Ms. Knight, are you willing to build a new King Elementary?
Um, I would have to review it further. I mean, my question for Dr. Rice would be, you know, are we continuing to pursue a grant opportunity in any shape or form at this time?
Late last week, or today, is it today? It was opened up, so we have not got in and written a grant yet. The goal was, when this opened up today, last I had looked, it was not. We were going to look through and see what the requirements were and discuss that at the work session. We were going to go ahead and do some pre-work on it before that work session, but bring it back at the work session once we've had time to review it. Again, that was just open today, is my understanding.
And personally, I tend to flow back towards the consideration of, you know, what Poplar Springs Elementary was, you know, first built for, and that was for an addition, you know. Could you be more successful at a grant with adding on to that school with the consolidation of a school into it, more so than prior grant requests were closing schools that did not consolidate into, you know, a school even remotely in that area, correct? So, you know, at the time, it seemed like that grant may have been a little bit, you know, could have been structured a little differently possibly, to be more successful.
Right now, again, as I shared just a few minutes ago, Poplar Springs has an enrollment of 501 this year. King Elementary has 364. To build the classroom space needed for, to absorb King Elementary into Poplar Springs, there's not the space there to build own classroom space for 364 students. The other school, Mount Olive in that area, also had an increased enrollment, and I don't have that information in front of me right now about empty classrooms, but it's not enough to take 60, 100 students to help offset all of that. So I don't know that just building on to Poplar Springs would allow King Elementary, would house King Elementary. And so that could possibly be a piece of something, but it's not a solution for this.
Because too, I mean, just to elaborate, Poplar Springs was intended to be built on to, correct? We've hit on this before, that the core is quite large, okay.
And it was also designed to have a middle school there.
On that property?
The property was designed, and since then, we've seen what the traffic issues are. Hindsight's always 2020.
So do you feel that the traffic is better there versus Kirby Road, or, you know, is it not less congested, you know, going into the property at Poplar Springs? I'm just asking.
No, it backs up severely.
It backs out on to the highway.
But that, I guess, is the situation in either location, is traffic congestion?
I mean, yes, traffic is always a problem at schools at arrival and dismissal. That is always the case at each school. Even schools that can dismiss in 15 minutes, the people there at the end of that 15-minute line complain about the 15 minutes. But currently, yes, King Elementary does get out to Kirby Road in the afternoons, and Poplar Springs gets out to 66 in the afternoons. Mount Olive and Chestnut Grove, with the two schools in one spot, they have a huge parking area, stacking area that helps manage that, but that is still an issue as well. To increase Poplar Springs up to 865 students and to build a middle school there, I can't imagine the nightmare of traffic that would be on that property.
Because there's only one entrance in and out of that school. At least at King Elementary, there are two entrances and exits. They take in students from both sides, and part of them come out to Kirby Road, and part of them go back out to Dalton Street, Dalton Road. So you do at least have two entrances and exits at King Elementary. And also at Poplar Springs, if we do add on, which, you know, in the future, we may have to add on, but how much can we add on to Poplar Springs and still meet our core capacity? If we added on a wing of 10 classrooms, I'm going to guess is going to be about the limit, and that would be about 200 students before we exceed our core capacity, and we have to increase the size of the gym and the cafeteria and everything else. So an addition to Poplar Springs may be a good idea, at least to pick up some extra classrooms. I think we keep that in our hat for the future, but it's not going to solve, it's not going to solve the issues. And I know Ms. Knight stated in the past, well, we can add on to Poplar Springs and maybe just redistrict a little bit, but then you're starting to send kids, then you're redistricting half the county, and that, and that, in my mind, that's going to be hard to do. Because to take care of the King Elementary students, you're not going to redistrict just the King Elementary students. You're not going to leapfrog those students over to Poplar Springs and to Mount Olive and the Pinnacle districts to send them to Nancy Reynolds or to Germanton. You're going to have to send part of Poplar Springs to Germanton, part of Mount Olive to Germanton, part of Pinnacle or half of Pinnacle is going to have to go to Nancy Reynolds in order to take, in order to make room for King Elementary students if you close King Elementary. If we don't rebuild it or remodel it or do something with it, you're not going to be able to just take those students out of the King Elementary district and leapfrog them over the other districts in order to get them where they need to go. That's not going to, that don't work. So are you willing to send half of Pinnacle to Nancy Reynolds?
Again, it all involves a plan. You know, I would have to see that scenario amongst your scenario or things on paper. I understand having an initial discussion, I get that.
Well, we had a plan, it was called the Masonboro Plan, and that's exactly what their plan was. And at the time, you were in favor of that plan, whether you're still in favor of it or not, I don't know, but further study, further study, whatever, is not working. It's not, it's not, we're not servicing those students and families at King Elementary like we need to. And if our tactic is to delay it and delay it and delay it, hoping that things will change, and then not be able, not have to do it later on, then that's still not servicing the need.
So is it your intention to spend $460,000 that's on hold at King now?
I think my intention is, is we need to, we need to commit one way or the other, and the county commissioners have told us that it'd be four more years before they can finance a new school. I would like to get information from them. In the conversation I had with the county manager about a week and a half ago over in King, he tells me, and I think he's told Dr. Rice before too, that in order for us to get financing for a new school, we're going, it's going to have to involve consolidation, that they won't approve, they won't approve financing a new school unless we agree to consolidate another school in the process. Are we willing to do that? If we build a new King Elementary, are we going to consolidate another school in order to get financing from the commissioners? Or can they be persuaded to not have that as part of their requirement? And if that is going to be their requirement, if they are going to require us to consolidate in order to get finance, and then we need to know that from the commissioners. I think we need to have that in writing from them. Maybe we can, Dr. Rice can communicate with the county commissioners or their office, and if that is part of the process, then they need to tell us that, because that will affect how we may apply for a grant. Those decisions are our decisions as a school board. Those are not the county commissioners' decisions. They can decide whether they want to fund it or not.
You want to weigh in?
I will.
All right, well, Mr. Duncan, what are your thoughts on it? We've heard Ms. Knight and Mr. Robertson.
Ma'am, I think the biggest piece is where are you going to get the money from? And we're leading down a conversation that I don't think we just throw it out and say, well, let's try this, you know? I mean, we've talked about it ad nauseam for years, I get that, but it all goes back down to funding, and we can't raise money. We, it's not our role in that, so, I mean, it's, I think, to your point, Mr. Robertson, about the five-year piece, I mean, we can't, we can't force their hand that I know of, and that's, that's the, I mean, we've got a lot of scenarios, a lot of what-ifs on the table, but until, I don't think we, this board can, I mean, we were willing at this point, when it was on hold, to, what, $2.5 million to go toward, toward King Elementary? That's what we were committed to do then, but that's, I mean, we got to, you're going to apply for a grant, and I'm assuming that was what you're talking about, but it's not come in open yet, correct? It came, I was told it would come open today, but I have not seen it today. And the thing about grants, I mean, we've seen that. We applied last time and we didn't get it. We tried to apply the first time, they didn't sign it. You know, it's, it's come down to if the county's going to finance it or not, but if you get, if you're getting it written from the current board, well, in next November, then that board changes, and then you're going to have a potential change of leadership there. I mean, I don't know if that's the case or not, it's... I mean, I agree that that school needs work. I mean, that's, so, I mean, what work do we put? I think the biggest, one big issue is the bathrooms. Well, the fix for that is that restroom addition. That $300,000, is that going to take care of everything we need for restrooms? Or is that part of the $700,000 for, on our budget request for drainage? I mean, is that $300,000 out the door? I mean, and I'm not putting Richie on the spot, but he can't answer that, I don't think, not in, not in this role right now. I mean, $300,000 to build a building, a restroom addition seems rather inexpensive, and I just don't know if that'll cover that.
It's expensive, there's a lot of things there that we probably can't see that need to be repaired. So when you get in, when you start into one project, it may lead you into several more, so it's, it's hard to say what we might have there.
As far as the need goes, we know that the building is in bad shape. Again, Richie has said it's our worst school, our, when we had the facility study, it said it was our worst school.
Inside the city limits of King this year, with Poplar Springs, Mount Olive, and, and, Poplar Springs, Mount Olive, and King, we had an increase of twenty-one students. In the rest of the county combined in elementary school level, we lost fifty-four students.
That's just in elementary?
That, just in the elementary. So King is growing, the rest of the county is going down. To say that consolidation has to be a part of the plan, it may not be connected to King. It may be closing in another school somewhere. Again, they didn't say it had to be two schools next to each other to build a new one. But if attrition keeps happening at this rate, there could be another school that closes itself eventually anyway. But again, we're not necessarily close to that right now. But the rest of the county has gone down fifty-four students in elementary school.
And I don't think this board really wants to close any more schools. We'd like to keep our schools out, we feel like we've got a pretty good mix the way it is now. But at the same time, we do have some old schools that are gonna need some attention. And Mr. Roberts can attest to that, that, and like he said, in that King Elementary, a few years ago, there was a sinkhole opened, a little, a little small pothole, where a little hole opened up in the parking lot. They hit it with a backhoe, and they said you could set a Ford truck in it, right? Were you there that day?
That's correct, I was there, yes, sir.
And that's right there beside the gym. So we don't know, you know, I, I had a, a person talk to me over the weekend, and they're afraid there's a sinkhole there bigger than that. You know, from all the drainage issues that we've had there over the years and the times. And if that is the case, and you know, we're, us not being proactive about it is not being what a board needs to do. So I just think we need to, if we, if Ms. Knight needs further investigation or further study with it, then that's what we need to do. But at some point, we have to commit to that. We can't just say we need further, I need to study it further, I need to study it further. We studied it for two years. We had Masonboro come in and give us a plan. If you don't wanna build a King Elementary, just come out and say so. If that's your choice, if that's your view on it, if you feel like it, King Elementary's not the right place to do it, and you wanna redistrict, then just tell us that. There's nothing wrong with, there's nothing wrong with taking a stance and saying that. I, I'm, I'm okay with you doing that.
Well, here's it in a nutshell. We don't have fifty million dollars to build a new elementary school. There's not enough money on there to fund a new elementary school. We're gonna have two new boards in a year and a half that may decide to build a new elementary school. This board, as a whole, voted to build a King Elementary as soon as funds were available. We don't have any funds. We have to do the best we can with what we got, and that's the duty of this board. So if we can build a new restroom, surely to goodness, drainage and pothole repairs, once we get that finished, maybe that will keep some of the water out of the new restroom we built, and then we look at it. I encourage you to go to Dr. Thrower and see, I mean, the, the fencing and access gates were the request of Mr. Bryant, the former principal, were they not, Dr. Rice?
Yes, sir.
See if the new principal still wants it. We can look at releasing that if it is a true necessity. If she feels like it's not as vital as she originally thought, then that money could go towards the restroom addition. We can put some money in there. We don't have enough to rebuild it. We can say we're gonna build one, we've committed to building one, we've committed to applying for the grant, we've committed that we're not gonna close another school right now because we like our, our numbers we're at right now. So having more discussions about what we're gonna do at King when we have no money to do with anything at King seems kind of fruitless. I mean, you, you voted to build a new school, correct?
That's right.
I did, you did, so that's the majority of the board. Ms. Bennett wasn't on the board. Ms. Knight had her reservations because she wanted to see more numbers. But the board had, made the decision to build a new King Elementary. So we can talk about it more, but that's not gonna build a new King Elementary. We've gotta find fifty million dollars.
Can we get correspondence from the county and ask them if they, because the county commit, the county manager plainly told me his thoughts and what the board, their thoughts on the funding for the school. So can we at least get correspondence from them and find out if they do fund the school, what are their thoughts? Will they require consolidation? Because I think that information helps us moving forward. If that's what they're gonna require us to do, then we need to know that. Because that helps us plan.
But that board may not be in place. That's two, that's two election cycles from now. You've got twenty-six election, you got twenty-eight election, and we're not talking about doing anything till twenty-nine. This board won't look like it does in two year, in four years.
So, or you're just saying we're content with just sitting and not doing anything?
No, I'm saying where our, our hands are tied.
So not make any repairs to King Elementary, just let it sit?
Well, it, you must've missed the part where I said, fix the drainage and then talk to the new principal.
I didn't miss any of it.
Well, then I said it, you didn't.
I didn't miss any of it, but I think what we need to do is we need to, we need to take a stand on it. Because, just like you say, the boards may not be the same. So in four years or eight years, whatever it is, the boards may decide not to do anything and not rebuild King Elementary. If we're gonna do that, then are we just gonna let it sit and let them, and let them not have a, not have any? We've, we've repaired all the other schools. There's no guarantee that we're gonna build a new King Elementary. So do we just wait and sit for eight years and then decide we might wanna rebuild a bathroom?
Well, we can take a resolution, we could vote a hundred percent, let's build a new King right now, but it's not gonna happen because we don't have fifty million dollars.
I'm talking about the repairs.
Well, I think the reason we, we held on the repairs last year, and this is from last year's numbers, is because we were finding out what we could do with the, the grant process, and then we didn't know what was gonna, to happen from the commissioners, all of that. I mean, there's, again, this, this report, the twenty-five, twenty-six, has got a million dollars in King Elementary repairs. I mean, that, but again, there's nothing that's made it over to a request. But I think that was at the direction of the board to hold. I mean, I'm not opposed to fixing some things if we need to. That, I don't think that was the intent of that either. It's not just as, at least not mine, is two things. You don't wanna throw good money away, you can't spend it but once, right? But the second thing is, is I agree, we, we've got to do some work, but is that the, is that the right, the best use of that money? I mean, I, coming off of the cuff here, I don't know if that is or not. I mean, is it, is it restroom? Or is it the, because right here, it says seven hundred thousand dollars for asphaltage damage and drainage is insufficient. This has probably been the wettest year we've had in a while. So how's the drainage?
Drainage, I mean, we haven't had any flooding this year, but we really hadn't had those types of rains yet. But drainage is flowing pretty good, but seven hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure for the parking lot and the tiles going under the parking lot, yeah, of course, that's gonna help. Is it gonna fix all our problems? Probably not, but it would help.
So that seventy-five, the drainage there, is that part of, or is that an additional?
That's an additional. That's just to fix what you can see in the back and front parking lots now, pothole, pothole-wise and alligator and pavement-wise, curbing, and to clean out the drainage. Now, we, like I said, we've already got three-quarters of that drainage cleaned out. We actually found another pipe that was buried that was supposed to go off the campus as well, that'll all heal. But to put a new parking lot in, fix the underground drainages, again, it'll help. But will it fix all our problems? I don't know.
And that's that seven hundred thousand you're talking about there?
Yes, yes, and that's, that's asphalt prices, that's why that's so high.
And I don't see the three hundred thousand dollar restroom addition on the twenty-five, twenty-six request. And it may be because we didn't want it on there.
No, it, it's because that money is already earmarked out of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
I see, okay. So this is additional million?
It's considered carryover.
That's carryover funding.
We've already budgeted money, the money's sitting there, it's just that we've gotta release it to do the work.
That's right.
Dr. Jones, do you have the due date for the grant this year?
Yes, it's due October third.
Was there anything on the application this year that says when awards may be made?
I did not read that on there. The amounts are the same as last year.
They never have announced that in the past.
Fifty-two, fifty-two, sixty-two million respectively. So the amounts are the same. The application looks very similar to years past. But October third is the due date.
I would suggest that we do this. We're gonna be into this grant process. Ms. Knight brought up a good point about, could we add on to Poplar Springs? Could we do something different with a grant, with a grant application in order to make it better? If we can figure out a better way, I'm all for it. I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm just, we're here to serve the students and the staff, and I think that's what we have to put our due diligence into. So what I would recommend that we do, Ms. Knight has brought up the fact that we could move the lines a little bit. We could redistrict a little bit and send some kids to different schools, and that might would help. Or we might could add on to a place or two. And, but I think we're gonna find that we're gonna add on, we're gonna spend as much money as we would with a brand-new school. And by adding on, we're gonna have our number so high in that school that it's not gonna be as functional as it would be if we just had a different school. But that's to figure out. What I would like to see us do, we've done a facilities tour in the past, and I'd like to see us do a facilities tour for the four elementary schools in the West District. I'd like to see us visit Poplar Springs, Mount Olive, King Elementary, and Pinnacle Elementary, and look at those schools, and look at the amount of vacant space and vacant classrooms that, that are in those buildings, and how much room we have there to actually redistrict and put King Elementary into those other three schools, or how little room we have left. I know Poplar Springs, I think, is pretty full. I think Mount Olive is pretty, pretty full. Pinnacle can hold another fifty, sixty, seventy students, maybe. If we took two hundred at, if we took two hundred at Poplar Springs, I mean, we're still short on our numbers. So I would like for us to go visit those schools, we could do that all in one day, and see how much space we actually have left at those schools. And to see if redistricting and adding on to a school is a possibility. And what kind of, maybe we even visit at the end of the school day when we can see the traffic congestion at Poplar Springs, and what is two hundred more students gonna look like trying to come out of that entrance onto sixty-six? I think last year, at some points, they had, even now, maybe they have a deputy over at the entrance directing traffic for people to try to get out onto sixty-six. So two hundred more students is not gonna solve that issue, by no means. So I would ask the board if we could do a, a tour one day in the next month or so, and go visit those four schools and take a look at them and see how much space we have left, or how much space we don't have left. And I think that may help us make a, a more firm commitment into what we need to do.
Okay, Ms. Knight, I believe you had a comment, and then we're gonna wrap it up unless Mr. Duncan, I'll give him his time.
Endure Ms. Bennett, I think, sometimes.
Yeah.
Yep. My question, I think it's been visited before, last year or a while back, about the number of students that are in Stokes County, say, from Forsyth County or surrounding counties, and I can't remember. Do you remember a ballpark number?
I, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Hundred or less?
It was less than one fifty, and that was spread out across the district with the exception of the Northern End. We did some at Sandy Ridge, a handful, that were coming out of Rockingham.
Yeah.
Nothing coming out of Virginia. Nancy Reynolds may have a few from Surrey. Majority were at Germanton, Walnut Cove, and the King Schools.
So, anyway, I would just like to see what those numbers look like, if they've changed much.
It's actually on our agenda to present at next meeting.
Oh, the out-of-district, just, I know that's the normal, probably, beginning of school year information to share. Just to evaluate, you know, I, I know we get state dollars, but then, you know, are we building facilities and things essentially to accommodate, you know, out-of-district students? And, and what does that consideration look like to? You know, do we really evaluate our fee policy? I mean, just, that may open up a whole bundle of questions. You know, just, I'm just saying it could evaluate, you know, evaluate a multi kind of step thing there, just to think about.
I'll get back to it. Ms. Bennett, do you have anything? Yes, we have you.
True.
I think, I think the, the general summary of that is, there's not enough room in Poplar Springs, Mount Olive, and Pinnacle together to absorb King Elementary. They just physically won't fit.
Yeah. I, I apologize, I might would have more questions.
Okay. As many times as this. Oh, there's, there's money possible, not the two-point-one, that's allocated for the capital fund grant. What is not, what is allocated is roughly a million dollars for repairs that we have held off trying to find out the grant, and also with the drainage and pothole repairs to see what we may have run into. We had to fix the wa, we had to fix the water coming in before we put a, a bathroom with a, a tub in it because it was flooding. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you.
Yeah. I've kinda lost. Mr. Duncan, do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I mean, to, to add on to what Ms. Knight said, I, I know we've done this too, not just outside district, but inside of the district moves outside of your specific school, where you're supposed to go to school versus where you actually go.
In district transfers.
In that, in, in, in county transfers.
Information that the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, okay.
We used to have a moratorium on West because it was overcrowded, and, and it happens, but the hundred and fifty students, last time we did this, seemed to be evenly spread out across the district, so.
I think that's right.
It wasn't one, nothing was going to move the needle. So what I will say, and I agree with Mr. Robertson on this, let's go look at those four schools and figure out what we're actually up against, because we can say traffic is bad. So at the next meeting, come up with a date that fits each one of you, because we're gonna meet again in two weeks.
Well, that's the question. Because the next meeting is September eighth. The meeting after that is September twenty-second. We would have to have the board approve a grant before an October third deadline. We will not have a meeting between, a regularly scheduled meeting between September twenty-second and when the grant is due on October third. So unless we called a special meeting, we would need to approve a grant on the twenty, on the twenty-second of September. So if there is a way possible that we could have this facility tour before September eighth, that would let us know, give us the direction of how to write the grant between the eighth and the twenty-second. Now, if we need another meeting, we could have another meeting, even electronic meeting to vote on a grant. But again, we, we have to write one, and if we do a similar one, it's not gonna take as long. But if we're writing a different grant, that's gonna take a little time. The county would have to sign off on it as well, and so we would have to look at their meeting schedule as well and that timeline. So the sooner we could take a tour, the better, but.
I don't think that's true. I think things change, and the county does not have to.
Well, that's always preferable. They don't have to, but we would ask for them to do that.
Okay.
And we did last time, that we asked them to do it, and they chose, and they did vote for it, even though they didn't have to. We asked for that, and they did.
Sure, I'm for that. I'm just saying, I don't believe, I think Stokes County is special. They don't require a sign-off.
Then September eighth meeting is a four o'clock meeting. How long do you think it would take to hit those four schools?
I mean, if you're just looking for empty classrooms and travel time, I mean, just a couple of hours to end up at Poplar Springs, I would suggest you get there before two, because that traffic is gonna get bad in there. You're not gonna get in the parking lot at two o'clock. So we would probably need to be at Poplar Springs.
So we would probably need to be at Popper Springs by one, one-thirtieth latest to see that, but I would say we probably would need to eleven o'clock at the first one, eleven AM at Pinnacle.
All right.
Eight to September. What town? You said.
So their meetings are the same nights as our meetings, the eighth and the twenty-second in September.
Because our, because of Labor Day, we, we.
We're off one.
Yeah, and that coincides with theirs.
All right, let's shoot for a tour on Monday, September eighth, starting at eleven o'clock. Firm up those that are able to make it. And we will culminate with the open, with the work session at King Elementary in the gym, four o'clock.
And we're starting at Pinnacle?
Yeah, I would suggest we start at Pinnacle and work our way through. Dr. Jones, are you okay with that?
He's just afraid that there's no AC at King Elementary?
In the, in the gym. Let me, yeah, let's clarify, there's, there's.
I did.
AC of the school, yeah, yeah, just in the gym.
It's what we put our students through.
I'm good with it.
Right.
Short sleeve shirts.
It's a work session. Come ready to work, or sweat, pick one. Okay. All right, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Discussion of Generative AI Policy thirty-two, twenty-one.
Good evening, Board. North Carolina has been leading the Generative AI Guidance, and they have just released, as of July twenty-eighth, version sixteen of that guidance. We have had our policy in place for a year, so we felt it was time to update our policy since it is still an evolving landscape. So we have five suggestions for updating our policy. If you'll look at page three, the first one is around our bullying. There has been a lot of advancements in Generative AI, specifically around image generation, video generation, voice cloning. So using AI to manipulate media, including creating or sharing deep fakes to bully, harass, or engage in any form of intimidation is strictly prohibited. The second recommendation we make is starts on page four. That would be all AI-generated content and resources should be cross-checked and verified with academic sources. That's part of our AI literacy initiative to ensure that our students don't rely on AI-generated contacted, contacted, content as truth. The next one for us is very important, protecting the integrity of personalized data. We want to make sure that we are following FERPA, COPA, SEPA, and IDEA compliance. And then the last one is certain AI tools may be blocked by the district based on recommendations from NCDPI or safety concerns that they, those pose. The only other change is just a technical change at the bottom. Due to the nature of the positions, people move in and out of positions, so rather than list the names of the people, we just move that to the position names. One of the changes that we are also looking to make is Gemini has now, is a core service of our Google education platform. And so that would be, fall under blocking certain tools. The reason for Gemini is that it is in our ed domain, so it does not feed into our large language models. It doesn't train those large language models. It's integrated with all of our Google Docs, Google Sheets, Google Gmail, that type of thing. So we are working with MCNC to potentially block ChatGPT and then go only with Google Gemini. And based on the guidance from North Carolina DPI, it would be grade six through twelve. It is already open for our staff and students, but that is a change that may be coming soon. We're just evaluating what that would look like. So we would ask that this policy sit for thirty days and approval after that.
I'll start the questioning with Chair's privilege. Mr. Johnson, do you see any issues with this policy?
No.
Since it deals with bullying and student safety, can it go for immediate amendment?
The board can, can do both. Can, can place it on the next meeting for formal adoption, but can go ahead and implement these changes immediately.
Okay, with that being said, Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Ms. Knight?
Were you saying that access by students of ChatGPT would eventually phase out altogether? And would it only be offered AI services, services through the Gemini, through a Google-based?
For students, yes, yeah. So we have put in a ticket with MCNC. We initially could block ChatGPT, but we're finding it more difficult as other, we have it open, but other districts are finding it more difficult to block because of the availability, large-scale availability it has. But as a district, we want to protect our students, and Google Gemini does that. It has all the capabilities of ChatGPT, but it is a protected environment for our students, so that's important to us.
Saying there is a workaround to protect, I mean, to block?
Yeah, we have a ticket into MCNC about trying to block ChatGPT. It would still be available for our adults, but just as far as our students, we want to make sure that we mitigate and protect them as best we can.
Okay, because this is just a more student-friendly educational.
Correct, yeah. It's under our Google environment, and so it does not feed out to the large language model, so none. If a student were to put personal identifiable information in it, it would, it would scrub that data out. It would not use that data to, you know, continue to learn the model.
Given the current setup, then there is some accessibility, vulnerability, or whatnot? There's not all the safeguards necessarily currently until you hear back from.
So, right, so in all of this, it's helping our students understand, understand AI literacy and understand that if you put personal information in, you know, that's a risk. So we do use K, sorry, learning.com for our K eight students, and there is a module in that where they learn about this. North Carolina has worked on micro credentials over the summer to help us with our high school students, because that is an area that we have a gap in providing AI literacy. But coming under Google Gemini and adopting that as one of our, our LLMs provides us that privacy and that protection that we need for our students.
Okay, well, hopefully that will work out sooner.
Yes.
Rather than later. Other than just reviewing it, you know, in a module or the students amongst themselves, you know, does a teacher also review this, like to reinforce? Is there material out to parents, you know, just to make them aware of the consequences too?
Yes, last year when we had our youth matter night, we had a tech family presentation, and we talked about that as far as students using Generative AI. Also at the state, this past summer, Brooke Johnson and I were on a team to create micro credentials, micro credentials for teachers all the way through K twelve. And so teachers themselves can complete these micro credentials to be credentialed in parts of AI. So it gives them more, more learning and education around how to use it in their classroom effectively, yeah.
Right, I mean, I think it's a great tool. It's, it's wow, you know, it's, it's amazing and all. It's just having that healthy balance of what does a student need to use it for and just the, you know, filtering of that. So anyway, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Absolutely.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions. I just thank Dr. TH for her work on this and all the work on the AI. As you have really been on the, the, the leading edge, the cutting edge of this whole.
We have. I'm very proud to work in Stokes County for that. We were actually, yesterday we received, or Friday we received an email, EdSafe Alliance. We have applied to be a, a network in their policy lab, and we were accepted into that. I don't have the final details yet, but it does look like we are the first school district in North Carolina to be accepted into the EdSafe Policy Network Lab, so that's really exciting.
That is very exciting, and it's, we applaud you for your hard work and your leadership and this, this whole AI stuff. For, for an old guy like me, it's hard to wrap your head around some of the stuff. And I, you know, I've put stuff into ChatGPT before just to see what comes back out, and it truly is amazing. So I know the, our district needs guidance on what we can do and what we can't do. So thank you again for your work, and if you think it's a good idea, I do too.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Duncan?
Two questions, real quick. That, where it says all AI-generated content resource should be cross-checked with verified academic. So how do you, if I was a teacher, you know, and I've got a report that's due, how would I know that the student ChatGPT'd it versus writing?
So we do advise our teachers not to use AI checkers. They are very fallible. Grammarly is one that's had a lot of issues and some lawsuits. It really comes down to knowing your children in your classroom and creating those relationships. So we have Generative AI modules for teachers that they can go through, but again, the state is releasing these new micro credentials, which we'll dive more deeply into that. We have a citation, guidance document, we have our use of AI rubrics, and then we also have a document that we encourage teachers and students to disclose how they used AI in a project. And Canvas is actually launching some AI tools as well to help with that. But giving project-based learning and assignments is a way to mitigate, rather than just having students, you know, answer questions that can be easily turned out in, in a LLM.
So those modules will help them identify?
It really.
Flagrism or?
Yeah, well, it really focuses on creating authentic assessments for students. So they have real-world project-based learning, because that's, you can't fake that. It's harder, you can't just put it into ChatGPT and say, you know, tell me how to solve this problem. You know, really encourages critical thinking, so focusing on those durable skills from Portrait of a Graduate, and it embeds those things. So communication, collaboration, empathy, all of those skills that are going to take our students out into the workforce.
And then the, the bullying and harassment piece, I know it says it's strictly prohibited, but is there anything we need to put in there citing our bullying, bullying policy that if, if it's noted here that, that we would follow the already established bullying policy to enforce? Because, I mean, it just says it's, let's see, including all AI and to manipulate media, including creating or sharing deep fakes to bully, harass, or engage in any form is strictly prohibited. But it doesn't give a, like, if it, okay, it was prohibited, that doesn't mean that you can't do it. So what's the consequences? I'm just saying, should we reference here in this policy back to our bullying policies as an add there? Does that, does that make sense, Mr. Johnson, what I'm asking? And I may be overthinking it, but did AI write the, the policy? I'm, I'm going to ask that. I'm just picking. I do appreciate the work, but, but is that something that we need to look at, that where there's?
Right, yeah.
There's teeth into that.
My advice is, is for the board to go ahead and implement this now because school has started. And by the next meeting, we can include a reference to the other bullying and harassing policy as far as the punishment for that.
Right. That's what I'm asking, just to.
Yes.
Pull your time it all together. That's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, and does that need to come forward as a consensus or a motion?
We need to move this to action.
All right, at this time, the, the chair will entertain a motion to move the adoption of these policies to action.
I'll make a motion that we move the adoption of the newly presented Generative AI Guidance Policy to action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry, so that will be action, item D. E. All of them. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Th. All right, moving on to action. Approval of Personnel and Coaching.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Approval of Facility Disposition.
Board, this is a carryover recommendation from the last meeting that was tabled. The board did ask for information about what Pine Hall cost us to sit vacant. Mr. Roberts and Ms. Moore have come up with a figure of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars per year. That includes electrical cost, a UST permit, water permits, and mowing and landscaping cost.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to, for the disposition of the Pine Hall facilities to revert it back to county management.
Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the motion needs to be that it is no longer used for school purposes. That would be step one.
Correct, and that would automatically trigger the statutory provision that the county commissioners would then take action on their first right of refusal.
Correct.
So our motion simply means we're no longer using it for educational purposes.
And we will dispose of the property pursuant to the statute.
And that we can go into negotiations if needed after that.
Correct. If the county commissioners were to take action to accept the property under their right of first refusal, then it's a matter of negotiation between the two boards as to the consideration for the transfer.
So we're not just handing them the property and said, here you go. This is a, we're going to negotiate now.
It's a two-step process. First, we have to offer the property, and if they accept it, then we negotiate the terms. And with the board can, of course, we can deed the property to them without further consideration, without monetary consideration. But that's a matter of negotiation between the boards.
So, so, Mr. Johnson, if we wanted to request that if the property is eventually sold by the county, then the proceeds for that sale go into our four cent fund, that would be discussed at a later date?
That's correct.
I, I mean, I personally understand not letting the facility continue to sit. If we cannot or do not have the means to, you know, have it function for educational purposes, my concern would be, you know, that the, my wishes would be that the county would have a very thorough process in place that involves, you know, community. As far as community, you know, input and what they would see as a business and, or something that could come or be in that area. Something that may be a panel of citizens or someone, you know, could have an input or say so on. I'm sure there's some things the citizens would prefer it not be, right? You know, that would increase my comfort level, and I, and I hope that that may be, you know, their intentions for something positive in that, in that area. But regardless, giving it up and stating that we are not going to be in use of it just opens up that door, right, for discussion? Or?
Somebody making the motion, somebody seconding the motion, us voting on the motion simply starts the process. And then your concern can be voiced to them as a citizen of Stokes County, to the county commissioners, because at that point, it becomes their property.
But also.
To negotiate with us a settlement for. We can stress our wishes.
If we couldn't come to an agreement or agree upon a price or something like that, what would happen? It's still, I mean.
We, we will continue to own the property.
Until an agreement?
Assuming the county commissioners say we want it, we, the commissioners want it, we, the Board of Education, will continue to own it until such time as we can agree on the terms of the transfer.
Okay.
Which could contain restrictions that you've indicated.
Okay, okay. Well, if there are terms to be met and we still technically own it, I could see moving forward with that discussion rather than a property just sitting or going maybe backwards. And, and, you know, I know we've tried, and I, I thank you, Richie, and your staff for trying to, you know, keep the school in decent appearance and all that. Thank you. uh, in decent appearance and all that. Thank you. Um, but I just know it's, you know, tough for any community just to have a facility sitting like that. So.
So with that, that being said, do I have such a motion?
I make a motion that we no longer need the Pine Hall facility for public school purposes.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carried.
Thank you, Board.
Next on the action agenda is bid tabulation of the West Oaks Tennis Courts.
Good evening again, Board. Um, in your packet, we've included the West Oaks Tennis Court replacement bid tabulation. We see, received two bids this time around. Ruston Pavings submitted a bid for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred, and Turner Asphalt submitted a bid for four hundred and sixty thousand, six dollars and sixty-four cents. I have spoke to Mr. Johnson about the construction documents. I have spoken to other districts, including Yacken County, Orange County, and Chatham County about Ruston Pavings. They all gave stellar reviews. They're extremely happy with their work. So based on that, on everybody's reviews of them, I'd like to recommend this bid be awarded to Ruston Pavings. See anyone having questions?
Is this for the complete turnkey of the tennis courts?
Yes, sir. Complete.
Mr. Roberts, can you, can you walk us through, uh, uh, what, what was involved in that?
Yeah, so, um, the first stage of this, we've actually already completed, which was to remove some trees around the perimeters. We've taken those out. Second stage would be to remove the fencing. Third stage would be for the company to come in and demo the existing pavement. And we've already done core samples in the base of that. They're not expecting any problems underneath. Um, after they demo that, get everything else, and they'll do soil compaction tests to make sure everything's good, build the soil up anywhere it needs to be built, lay the new pavement. And then the specialty company will come in, who will work under this price here, to add surface sealer, your paint, all your markings.
So it is going to be an asphalt court with a surface on top?
Yes, sir. Asphalt, asphalt court with a surface on top.
Is that, is that pretty typical for what most courts are today?
It's typical. Uh, they do make them out of different materials. You can go concrete, but it's much more difficult to afford. Much more expensive in cement.
Yeah, will there be some more grading? Because I think those courts now are a little out of level.
They're out of level, that's correct. There will be some minor grading. Nothing major is expected. Again, we don't expect anything to be going on with the base, but, um, we've got, uh, several tons of stone and everything figured into that price, Ruston did, just in case.
We're not increased. There's four courts there now, I believe. Is that going to stay four courts?
That'll stay the same, yes, sir.
Budget was three hundred thousand, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, uh, the bid tabulation of West Oaks Tennis Court to Ruston Pavings Company in an amount of two seventy-nine, nine hundred.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you.
Approval of Yavetti lease agreement? Ms. Flippin? Ms. Flippin?
Good evening. This is a renewal contract for the two classrooms that Yavetti Head Start leases. One at London Elementary and one at Mount Olive Elementary.
Is your microphone on? Put red, green button on.
Sorry. So, good afternoon, or evening. This, uh, lease agreement is a renewal lease agreement from Yavetti Head Start, where Yavetti Head Start leases two classrooms, one at London Elementary School and one at Mount Olive Elementary School, um, to house their, um, Head Start programs for three and four-year-old students. Um, the only change that is in this particular contract or lease contract is at Mount Olive, um, in appendix or exhibit A, where Mount Olive obtained a pre-K classroom from Stokes County Schools from Poplar Springs due to overcrowding. Um, Stokes County Schools and Yavetti Head Start will split the cost of the playground maintenance at Mount Olive Elementary School. Mr. Johnson has, um, gone through the lease and approved the additions to that. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
First off, welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Bennett, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Knight?
No, sir.
Mr. Robertson?
No questions.
Mr. Duncan?
No questions.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
Action item E.
Make a motion to approval of the Generative AI Guidance Policy as presented.
Okay. Glad I didn't have to say that. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Mr., uh, Johnson, if you could, just get us the, the teeth behind it, and, uh, we can put it on consent for the work session.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Dr. Jones, information and announcement.
Thank you. I, um, as mentioned by Chairman Rogers a few minutes ago, I think eleven o'clock, the board will meet to do a facility tour on the eighth, um, followed by a work session at King Elementary at four o'clock. For those that are listening and in attendance, that'll be at King Elementary, uh, on the eighth of September. Uh, you have field trip requests, fundraisers, and calendars in your packet. Uh, I do want to give a special thanks to our directors and school-level staff for a great start thus far, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I want to echo those. We're off to a good start. Let's keep the ball rolling. We're all rowing down, down the river together. Uh, in conjunction, the September meeting at King Elementary, it has been noted that that is a non-air-conditioned facility. We're going to, we're going to educate ourselves just like we do the children, so dress appropriately and wear plenty of deodorant.
The gym's not, not air-conditioned.
Well, yeah, the, yeah, good, good point. The gym is not air-conditioned, which is where we're going to be, so, uh, with that being said, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are out of here. Thank you all for coming out.